Good evening. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, August 28th, 2018. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
.............................................
If everyone would kindly please remain standing for a moment of silence. If we would remember, we lost Senator McCain this past weekend, and also please remember those victims in Jacksonville. May be seated. As a reminder, if everyone would please place their cellphones on silent or vibrate, and if you have to take a call, please step outside. First thing on the agenda is I need a motion to approve the agenda. If there's any additions and deletions first. Mr. Cohen?
I'd like to add, in presentations, can we do A before A? Because it's going to be real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
We can just make it the first.
We'll do a sub-A first.
A sub-A. If I said AA, AA is after A, so we're going to do A before A.
Do you want to be AA or A?
A. Just A.
Okay. What would you like to add?
I'd just like to introduce our new engineer for town.
Oh, okay. All right.
Not now, but in a minute.
During the presentation?
Yeah.
No worries. Any other additions or deletions? At this time, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Removed.
Mr. Morris made the motion to approve. All in favor. Okay. The motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Okay. First on the agenda, okay, our presentations. First on the agenda is, Mr. Cohen, your item to introduce the new engineer.
Thank you, Michael. And Patrick, you can help me on this, but we do have a new town engineer, and his name is Brian Alderstein. Brian, would you stand up and welcome to Indian Trail and welcome to the town. You look like you're dying to get up and say something, would you? Welcome. We're glad you're here.
If I may, David?
Sure.
Brian had joined us from Effingham County. This is northwest of Savannah, Georgia. And if you look on the website, when you look at engineering, you only find Brian. There is nobody else out there. So he is handling all the engineering. We snitched him from Effingham County, and he's going to be 100 percent working on the complete street uptown for the town revitalization. A lot of good background. He's done a lot of the stuff that we're looking forward to have him doing. So, welcome. Good to have you onboard, Brian.
Welcome. Okay. That brings us to our next presentation. Greg Rogers, you here?
Yes, sir.
There you are. Stand up, sir. I'd like to introduce everybody to Greg Rogers. He's the owner of Call Printing. The Rogers family has been in Indian Trail, I believe, as long as Indian Trail's been in existence. Today, we're celebrating Greg's official 25th anniversary of owning Call Printing and helping Indian Trail. I always want to say this, but, Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
On behalf of the Town Council, the Town of Indian Trail, thank you for your years of service. It's a token of our appreciation and all you do for the town.
Thank you very much.
We wish you another 25 years, although I know you'd like to get to the beach as soon as possible.
Soon as possible. Who knows? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Feel overwhelmed, but I appreciate this very much.
This council has made it a tradition now to welcome new businesses to town and give them an opportunity to speak. We have a few on the agenda tonight. First, we'd like to recognize Nexus Dental. If you'd please come to the podium, take a minute, introduce yourself, and tell us about your business, and welcome to Indian Trail.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Harish Patel. This is Dr. Janelle Patel, who's my associate. We've, can you hear? Okay. We opened about two months ago. We were actually located in Monroe, and I moved the practice to Indian Trail, a great location here, near where the urgent care is. So, as we had, on Friday, we had an open house, so we had all the members, a lot of the members came, which was great. So we want to thank you for coming as well. We're a general dental practice, and we offer all sorts of, all forms of dentistry. So, anything from extractions, root canal, crowns, everything, so. But we like to grow in this area. We think this is a great area to be in, and just, I've lived in Union County for 11 years, so I know the area very well. So I want to thank you for having us here and also letting us open in Indian Trail.
Welcome. Come on up.
Welcome. On behalf of the council, I'd like to welcome you, wishing you many years of great success in Indian Trail, and thank you for being with us. Thank you.
Dr. Patel, did you bring any business cards with you?
Yes. I think that's a new customer.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Our next business is Grapes Wine Bar and Bistro. Fabian, are you here?
Yes.
Welcome. You want to?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, my name is Fabian. I was in Matthews for six and a half years, in a close to Costco, next to Kadoba, and I couldn't wait to, I would say, to leave and to be with you in Indian Trail. I really thank you definitely. I love Union County and especially around Sun Valley because it's booming tremendously. So it's, I'm very happy to, I would say, to have my business over there. So obviously, one bar, I have about 350 different wines. I do a lot of wine classes, a lot of wine events, also love music on weekends, and so it's a lot of fun, I would say, especially at this time of the year, if you come in for a glass of wine, I would say, anytime, from 2:00 p.m. So I'm open now from five days, so Tuesdays to Saturdays from 2:00 p.m., and then I will probably extend from Sundays as well when it goes to off-season, I would say. So, thank you so much. I'm very glad that we open July 20th, so I just opened the business a few weeks ago, and it's been, the response has been pretty amazing so far. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
On behalf of the council, many years of success.
Anyone speak French here?
Thank you. Eric, are you here?
Yes.
Come on up, Eric. Although you're not officially open yet.
We're not, sorry.
That's okay.
So, my name is Eric. My name is Eric Martin, and I'm here representing Jets Pizza. My wife and son were here, and they left because he's only one. But we are hopefully opening this weekend. We've had some problems trying to get our gas meter in, but we're going to be located where the Publix and the Poppy Seed Bagel Plaza is. This is currently our second store. Our first one, we actually opened in Matthews back in 2012. We were in an area that honestly, we were like one of the few buildings in the area, and it's really grown up around us in that area, and we've managed to be very successful there to be able to open this second store. I've personally worked with the company for 20 years. I love what I do, and I honestly wouldn't do anything different than what I do. We make all of our product from scratch every day. When we open, you guys are going to see that we have a commitment to customer service and quality of product, and there's going to be a lot of probably free pizza given away right away. So, please come and see us. Like I said, we're hoping to open up this weekend, so. And we do help with a lot of community service events in Matthews at that location. We work with the Kiwanis Club, the schools, a bunch of different stuff. So if anyone in the area is looking to do anything like that, please come and see me. We can try and work something out also to help out with that. We love being an active member in the Matthews community, and I'm looking forward to it here also. That's all for me.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Welcome to Indian Trail. Wishing you best of luck.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I, please, if I don't pronounce this correctly, Ko-Rich Orthodontics?
Hi.
Did I get it right?
Very close.
Okay.
I think that's as close as it can get. My husband's Brazilian, so we pronounce it Carish, but rhymes with cherish. But, good evening, everybody. I'm Lyndy Carish. My husband Leo and I just opened Carish Orthodontics last Thursday, so we're open for business. We're in Sun Valley Commons as well, and we're just so excited to be part of the community. I'm from a small town in North Carolina, so I feel very much at home here. Looking forward to partnering with the local schools, supporting our youth, doing lots of little fun things along the way, too, for them. But we provide orthodontic services only, so we're doing braces, Invisalign retainers, growth and tooth development monitoring for children from about the age of six years old on up to young folks of the age of 99. So, everybody in between, too. Thank you so much for having us here and giving me the opportunity to talk about our business. Very excited.
Wishing you many years of success.
Thank you so much.
That brings us to Item C, the July 4th, 2018 Parade winners. Hayden?
I hope everyone's doing all right on this Tuesday. We are here tonight to recognize the 2018 July 4th Parade winners. This year's parade, we had nearly 60 entries. This included over 400 people walking, over 100 vehicles, floats, horses, fire trucks, live animals, and more. The Parks and Rec Department would just like to thank a couple of groups that helped out. The Lions Club again helped us with lining up the parade down on Post Office Drive. Union West Rotary again assisted with judging the parade. Union County Sheriff Chase and Malcolm and I all worked together to make sure it was a safe event. It's always nice to know that they have our backs with anything that may happen on a July 4th day. And then a special thank you to the VFW Post 2423. They led the parade with a flyover, which I can honestly say is a first for Indian Trail. Looking forward to doing that again. So the parade has four categories, the most use of red, white, and blue, the most creative, most outstanding walking group, and most spirited organization. So again, these winners are chosen by the Rotary Club. So we had four very clear winners this year. What we'll do is we'll announce all the winners, and then if, at the end, if they could all come up and receive their trophy. So the most use of red, white, and blue went to Valley Church. The most creative went to American Legion Post 458. The most outstanding walking group went to Roar Taekwondo, and the most spirited organization went to UC Jeepal. So if everyone could join me up front, we'll hand out some trophies and take a quick picture.
Thank you.
Good night. I'll get my glasses this week. The dog knocked them off the table, and I just got in.
All right. All right. One, two, three. Did you do that?
Not to my knowledge. All right. Perfect. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Did you want to say something?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Gray. I'm the commander of Post 458 in Indian Trail. I want to thank the city for allowing us to participate. This is our second year doing it, and we have a lot of fun. So, I just want to say, a lot of people don't know the American Legion. We're the oldest wartime Veterans Association in the country. We're also the largest. It was founded in 1919 after World War I. It was founded to help veterans after they got out of the service, but it's also here to help the community, so we try to participate as much as we can. Nationwide, the American Legion does a lot, especially focused on the young. We have a lot of programs to help citizenship, patriotism, and responsibility for the young. So keep us in mind, our post is 458. As the crow flies, we're about two blocks this side of where the post office is. We're an industrial area, so I just want to thank the city again for allowing us to participate. And the reason I have Jackie up here, she did a tremendous amount of work on the float, and we have other members here that also contribute to our post. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Marcus is going to read the public comments as I stepped on my glasses.
All right. The town rules for speaking during public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Town of Indian Trail. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the Internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience, as well as the speakers, to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that the mayor or the council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have grievances, concerns, or complaints relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or any one of us on the council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect all town employees' right to a fair hearing on your grievance. And the first speaker is Mr. Michael Falkenberry. Please come up, sir, and you'll have three minutes once you state your name and address.
Michael Falkenberry, 519 Picket Circle. There used to be a plaque in the old civic building recognizing businesses. I wonder if you have a plan to do the same thing here. I think it'd be much appreciated. The businesses have been there for a long time. They do need the recognition. Also, recently, I did receive a public information request. It was town staff salaries. And no, I'm not going to reveal that it's salaries. I'm not going to do that. Never have, never will, on Facebook. However, one town staff member, and I don't know why, got a decrease in pay. I hope it was a typo, hope it was an oversight, but the person deserves just as much as everyone else got, and all the rest of them was well-deserved what they received. Also, in the committee and board meetings, the attendance issue, as you know, I've attended many, many board and committee meetings over the years, and I've noticed a decrease in the amount of meetings that are taking place, one of which, because of your traffic issue, many of the members can't get here on time. Maybe change the time to maybe 7:00 p.m. when they have the meetings, have more time for people to have a meal before coming to the meeting. Also, maybe have it on Saturday mornings. That way, again, they have more time and more time to spend with their family during the week and because of their work schedule. And as for your public comments policy, on several occasions, I have met with town staff in addressing grievances, also what I've also found out is that you get the personalities involved. I came up here last January in regards to a comment made by a town staff member. In that conversation, I was told I could have embarrassed you if I wanted to. Don't have the video or audio, and from now on, if I am to meet with anyone, it will be with a video camera. It's non-negotiable. Again, things do happen. People remember certain events differently from other one else. This way, it's consistent across the board. Also, in that conversation, what I had spoken about during that council meeting in public comments was factual. It was an email I got from the town finance director. The information was correct. He verified the information before the council meeting started in January. He didn't fax an email. He verified it was truthful. So it was nothing, nothing illegal about that. Also, also, there was a comment made last public comments. It was not on meeting minutes, but déjà vu. How can I address this? I don't understand how someone who by themselves tried to sabotage the Miracle League of Indian Trail to make such a comment, and I have emails to back that up, too, and I also asked my wife. She'll verify it. Thank you.
Ms. Rona Sutton, you have three minutes once you state your name and address.
I'm going to get my own hand up real quick.
Is it the one with the Census Bureau?
Well, yes.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Rona Sutton. I live at 6,000 Clover Hill Road, Indian Trail. I'm a member of the 55-year-old group that gets together on Mondays and Wednesdays, senior players, and we just had Mahjong taken away from us that was meeting on Mondays. We had it for about two months. And I want to share some statistics about seniors. This is from the U.S. Census Bureau. I was directed to American Community Survey, and I entered Indian Trail zip code. In 2016, the total population of Indian Trail was 34,282, 16,973 males, 17,309 females. The age range, 55 to 59, 5 percent, 60 to 64, 4.1 percent, 65 to 69, 3.9, 70 to 74, 2.7, 75 to 79, 2.2, 80 to 84, 1.4, 85 and older, 1.2, all totaling 20.5 percent, or 7,028 seniors. Also from the American Community Survey, in 2016, the total households in Indian Trail were 11,565. Households with one or more 60 and older, 30.9; households living alone and with 65 and older, 6.2, making a total of 37.1 households with 60 and older. This information below comes from Bradshaw of the Indian Trail Planning Department today. Hafield Road in Indian Trail has a portion of the neighborhood going to be age-restricted and is now having streets paved. Waxa Indian Trail Road will have 40 homes with age restrictions, and the builder is currently pulling permits. Secret Shortcut will have 200 homes, age-restricted, and has recently finished rezoning. From the Union County Board of Elections, there were 16,410 people who voted in 2016 general election. Of that total, 5,791 were 55 and older, which is 35.3 percent of the people who voted. With the large population of seniors voting, we need a town council that will look out for us. By having 37.1 percent of households over 60 in Indian Trail, this means less garbage is being produced by these households, meaning a savings for Indian Trail. Seniors also do not need public schools. More savings for Indian Trail. By seniors saving Indian Trail money on these different items, could we not have a budget just for seniors and have our own senior center?
Three seconds. Sorry.
I have heard Indian Trail wants to sell their previous town halls, and maybe until one is built for us, we could use one of those buildings. All the people 55 and older moving to Indian Trail to fill these houses that are being built, they may be looking for things to do. Indian Trail needs its own town senior center to help draw people here. The Mahjong and senior players on Wednesday has helped me so much. Just two and a half years ago, I tried to kill myself, and by having these activities, they have given me something to look forward to each week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gail Cohen?
My name is Gail Cohen. I live at 6,004 Clover Hill Road, Indian Trail, North Carolina. My colleague, Rona, mentioned a lot of the statistics involved in the population of senior citizens. My comments are mainly emotional about preserving the programs that we currently enjoy with the town and asking you, men and women, to please reconsider some of the cancellations that have been put through recently. Studies have been performed by AARP and other councils on the aging that have found that activity participation is essential to the quality of life. It helps reduce the risk of depression. It helps to reduce global cognitive decline, and it enhances social connectedness. Older adults who participate in senior programs can learn to manage and delay the onset of chronic disease and experience immeasurable improvements in their physical, social, spiritual, emotional, mental, and economic well-being. This not only benefits us as an adult population, but it benefits the well-being of the community as well. We need to recognize the increasing needs of our older adults. We are all taxpayers. We vote. We bring revenue to our local shops and stores. I am here today to request that you reconsider the decision to discontinue some of our programs, including the Mahjong and yoga program, but I'd also like to be assured that our Wednesday morning coffee, excuse me, coffee, games, and conversation program will remain safe and thriving. Many of us do not have close family members. We do not have children in our lives, and in some cases, we do not have extended families at all. Please don't take away our programs. Please give us the opportunity to maintain the friendships, the bonds, and community family that we have managed to establish and cultivate through the efforts, which we all appreciate, of the Town of Indian Trail's administration. Thank you very much for your time today.
I'm going to struggle with the last name, but it's Anthony F. Farron. All right.
My name is Anthony Farron. I live at 1026 Dalton Lane in the Union Grove subdivision of Indian Trail. I'd like to thank the mayor and town council for giving me this opportunity to address all of you pertaining to the concerns of our seniors gathered here tonight, also known as the primetime players. We are a close-knit group, not only attending town functions, but also getting together in our everyday lives. We consider ourselves family. My wife and I lived in Charlotte for over 33 years, and I retired from the United States Postal Service as a letter carrier, in which I worked for 32 years. After retirement, we left Charlotte for Union County and Indian Trail for a more peaceful and stress-free life. We discovered coffee cards and games shortly thereafter at the old cultural center and made friendships immediately. We very much felt welcomed. Four people became eight, eight became 20, and before you know it, we had become a village. We had couples, singles, and transplants. We also had a couple of ladies who had just lost their spouses, and coming here gave them a chance to be part of something special. It wasn't going to make up for their loss, but we all rallied together to help people feel... feel a part of something that they may never had had if they didn't take that first step. Moving our group to this magnificent building was just icing on the cake. I understand the town is in business for making money so it can grow, but at the expense of a program that has been off the charts? Recreationally, there are great amenities here in this town. Just to mention a few, the gym across the street, tennis courts, our beautiful parks and ballfields. But those are for mostly the young. As we get up in age, we need other things to do that we're not physically fit for. But the coffee cards and games, and most recently canceled Mahjong, offers our seniors the ability to use our minds and think, laugh a little, and feel good about ourselves. It's better than sitting around at home. You can also ask anyone here that we all plan our outside appointments, doctor's appointments and things like that, around Mondays and Wednesdays, and our monthly outings as well. I'm not here to yell and scream and be upset. My wife always considers myself as being from Switzerland. I can never make a decision and take a side. But in this case, I'm gonna make an exception. After all, we're just asking for 250 square feet of real estate, a few tables, and two hours of time. We'll even supply the coffee. Thank you.
Counsel, excuse me, one moment.
You might not see her, but she's definitely... But she just needs a download, that's all.
Thanks.
Mike, could we make her sit if she wants to speak?
Three, sure.
Yes.
I'm really short.
She could sit if she wants.
I'm rolling for it, really. Are you gonna make me hold that?
I can hold it for you, then.
I am not a public speaker. I am angry and I'm scared. Angry that I have to be up here shaking and nervous, and angry that this town council cares more about money than its citizens. That's a Charlotte mentality. I know. I lived there for 35 years. It can be a cold, autocratic place that doesn't care about people, especially its seniors. That is why my husband and I held out so much hope when we moved to Indian Trail. And you know what? We were not disappointed. We found a home at the cultural center and later in the wonderful new town hall. In a program run just for seniors, run by a crazy, sweet, hard-working woman, whose only goal was to bring us all together into one big, happy, cohesive group. And she succeeded beyond her wildest dreams. These people are the closest thing to family that many of us have. For some of us, our families are out of state, not living, or unfortunately, not speaking. And Susan gave us the family to belong to, a place to come, to be with that family. We love how she's always trying to broaden our horizons and having us try new things. So when Mahjong came up, many of us jumped up at the chance to play. But now you're turning into Charlotte, putting money over people and kicking a bunch of senior citizens out. And even if we could find an alternative place to play, we have no games to play with because you won't let us sign out the games either. They'll just sit and collect dust. So yes, I'm angry. But more than that, I'm scared. I see what you did to Mahjong, and I worry that coffee and cards on Wednesday will not be far behind. Please don't take my family away from me. Thank you.
I think my thunder has been stolen. And I only have a couple of things I want to say. I came here tonight to ask a big question. Why? Why was Monday canceled? As you've heard from these people, it's a small room that we have been playing in and learning in and taking part in. I actually pay money to belong to Levine Senior Center. Went over there bragging, "Well, I live in Indian Trail," and guess what the Indian Trail City Council has done for us? We have learning Mahjong. We have Wednesdays with games with people, food, camaraderie, among all. They just couldn't believe when I told them all this and I said they've bought us games, tables. And then I came back and it was gone. So, as Lisa said, are we turning into Charlotte? I hope not, because I know a lot of people who ask me, "Gee, where is it you said you lived again?" Oh, Indian Trail. And I'd like to just know why the Mahjong Monday was canceled when we actually sat there for two little hours in the morning. And if it is necessary for our government to have to have that space, I totally understand. And all these people will back me up on that. But I'm just wondering, if I come in here next Monday, is that room going to be filled? I thank you all, and I really love living in Indian Trail, and I surely hope it doesn't change. Thanks.
At this time, I'm gonna close the public comments and open up the council's rebuttal. Mr. Cohen?
Very moving, very eye-opening. And I might be the first to say, maybe the town made a mistake in doing what they did. I wasn't aware, to be personal, and I don't think any of council members were aware, that this was the large group. I'm not trying to, this large of a group, I'm not trying to make excuses. I think part of the reason that a lot of these programs were leaving was because two and three people were showing up here, and staff had to come. I believe the way the town looked at it was it would be more beneficial that if the residents didn't go, like, to a yoga studio somewhere. And I'm really not even familiar with a lot of the things that you guys do. And I can understand that. I can understand having to have staff here for one person or two people who come in for a different reason. If I may ask a couple of questions, how many people show up for, what, for the coffee? And pardon me, what do you call it?
Mahjong.
It's a game.
Mahjong is on Mondays.
And how many people are there?
Usually 16 to 18. And on Wednesdays, we have about 25 to 30 every week.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Proton. If we're gonna speak with the audience, can we ask maybe one representative to come up to the mic to answer your questions?
Would somebody like to come up and speak?
That way, we make sure people watching from home can hear.
Should be able to answer all the questions.
Well, okay, so 16 to 18 people show up for...
Right, we just started Mahjong. It's not an easy game to learn, either. We just love to learn new games. And I don't mean to get off track here, but when we started coffee, cards, and games, it was, you know, Scrabble and Yahtzee and stuff like that. And all of a sudden, someone said, "Let's learn how to play Dominos." And we had no idea how to play Dominos, and now it's, everyone knows how to play Dominos. So then Susan thought we'd branch out if someone wanted to learn, "Does anybody have Mahjong?" And no one knew how to play. So we had some people come up and teach us. And once again, the age has everything to do with it. We want to learn at this age. We don't want to backtrack. And I'm sorry, I'm getting way off base here, but yeah, Monday, we have about 16 to 18 people. Unfortunately, the game can only play four at a time, so some people even have to sit. And that's only been going on for a couple of weeks. It started small, but, you know, in six to eight weeks that we've done it, it went from four people to eight. Like I said, we're up to about 16 to 18 in the city. Whoever was in charge was nice enough to buy us the games. There were some people that have their own games, and they bring them. Anyway, that's...
And there's a coffee group, too, correct?
Well, we're all the same. We're actually about 20 short tonight. I mean, we're the ones, I mean, Mahjong was our big concern.
It's two separate things, right?
It's two separate things, but it's the same group of people.
But it comes two different days?
Yes. Wednesdays has been, it started over the cultural center, from what I understand, probably about two or three months before my wife and I moved into Indian Trail. And we just sort of, so I, I think I saw a flyer at one of the ballparks. They have flyers and different things, and so we brought it there. So that's, yeah, that's separate. That's Wednesday. That's gangbusters. I mean, you know, we have 25 to 30 people, probably more than that sometimes. And of course, we have once-a-month outings. We've been to the Arts Center downtown. We've been to an escape room, Susan bowling.
And I don't want to hog the mic here. I just want to say, one other, not me, I don't want to...
No, I'm going off tangent here, though.
They probably want to speak. Man, I don't want you guys to think at all that Indian Trail is greedy for money, because that's not our town. And that's not what we represent. And as my fellow council people, I've been on council for seven years, and this is a bunch of caring people up here.
I believe you.
And, you know, I think their ears are open, and we learned a little something tonight. And I don't know that, you know, I can't personally change anything, because I'm just one person. But you moved me tonight, and I had no, I had no idea. I really didn't. And I think we're gonna fix it, okay?
When you get a bunch of seniors...
I can't say for me, I can only say me. I think we should fix it.
When you get a bunch of senior citizens together, it's like a, everyone's got their own opinion. And the first thing a lot of, and not me personally, everyone had their own opinion. And I even try to tell some people, "Slow down." You know, it's not as black and white. I'm not a black and white person. It's just, it's never black and white to me. So, no, I didn't believe you were trying to push us out because of money. But a lot of people see it that way, because that's the way they're thinking. And I totally understand that.
I completely understand how you think. I completely understand you're being a little bitter about it, and I would be, too. And I just, it's just not that way. And I think what's happened is you got, and this is just my guess, you got bundled up with a bunch of programs where people were coming in, and they were one and two people showing up, and you had to have staff here, and you had to open the building at certain times for doing certain things.
I understand. Yeah, we've never had two people.
And it just made more sense to take that and push it over to maybe a private enterprise or to private businesses and that type thing. But I'm curious what the town has to say about it or anybody...
Allow me to just step in and clarify a couple of items. One of the things that we do is, since we moved to the building, is we start monitoring our programs, not necessarily the senior citizens program, but all of them. And we did run into a few of them that we had attendance of two, three people, four people. Like the yoga, as an example, we had two people. Some fitness classes, we had two to three. And we are opening the entire business, having part-time employees there. And we're not about money. We don't have any program in parks and rec that we provide that we make money. We don't. That's not the intent. The intent is to provide programs to our citizens, regardless to age, from three all the way up. So after evaluating all these classes, we decided on removing some of them. We did not touch any of the senior citizen classes, for your information. None. We did not. The class that we, that you're talking about, it was, it's miscommunication on staff's part. It was not communicated neither to the park and rec director, neither to the town manager. And all of a sudden, and again, I apologize on behalf of our staff, it was brought up without taking into consideration whatsoever any oversight from the town manager's office and the director's office. So this is just a clarification item before you guys. So that program came on board without even knowing anything about it. We did not touch any of the senior citizens. We are in full support. I, myself, the town manager, I walk around and see the large number of people that attend the coffee and games. But as a matter of fact, I walked in there one day, kind of joked around and said, "If you guys accept me, I'll be more than willing to be a part of you." So absolutely not. And I received some emails, too, that it says, "We're canceling all the senior citizens program." That was not true at all. And I responded to an email saying, "That's not what we're doing here." And again, just to clarify to council and all you guys, we did not touch any of the senior citizens, except that class that was brought in the building without even discussing it with anybody. And the only thing we're trying to do, we want to know about it, just to make sure that you're comfortable, you're safe, we have enough part-time employees to take care of that, and we have a budget to have these guys to come and, you know, be there while you're here. So we know that Susan handled some of these programs. But again, it's miscommunication on staff's part, and I don't think our senior citizens should be blamed or punished for that. It's something that we have to work amongst ourselves, just to make sure, you know, and again, we're monitoring all these programs. We did not touch the Wednesday. We did not touch the field trips. We did not touch any of that. And this is what the building is for. The building is a community center with a lot of community rooms. So anytime we have a room available, we'll make it available for you guys. But there is some miscommunication on part of the staff and probably some of you guys that you did not know the real reason why we went in there and just limited that class. Again, as Councilmember Cohen said, if we have attendance, low attendance, while we have other use for these large community rooms, definitely, to serve our citizens, save taxpayers' money, to be out there and make sure we're effective and efficient. But anytime we have a large number of citizens or children, art classes, definitely, we don't touch them if we have good attendance. So again, on behalf of the town, I apologize for the miscommunication that you guys were not aware of.
I appreciate that very much.
Sure?
I have a question. Does that mean that it was a miscommunication that the class was canceled or the class was canceled, and we need to, you know, further look into it? Was that counts?
Well, Susan told us, Susan relayed to us whoever she heard from that this, you know, last Monday was the last time we'd be playing.
It's all seniors, too.
Right. Again...
And we're not throwing Susan on the bus. We think she's fantastic. So she's just going by what someone told her. It wasn't her decision to do it.
I've seen it as little as two people in any room I've ever been in.
Well, not what else he was saying, right?
Two people?
The yoga, maybe.
Keep on talking here. We're talking not your class, other classes, totally. Nothing to do with your...
I'll straighten her out. Don't worry about it.
Excuse me, counsel, for one moment. Mr. Morse wanted to speak.
Yeah, I think David kind of nailed it there. I was under the understanding that there were some classes that they didn't have anything to do necessarily with seniors. There were like yoga class that were just poorly attended. I wasn't aware of this Mahjong, if I'm pronouncing it right, class being canceled. And I know that none of the council or the staff would ever just go, you know, single out senior classes or things geared towards seniors. I think the one concern that I have, regardless of who's coming into town hall and having classes or such, is during those programs, do you guys sign a waiver of liability if some accident was to happen?
We do have to. The only thing we do is sign us an attendance sheet. But if you want us to do that, I'm sure none of us have a problem doing that.
And I didn't know if maybe that was one of the concerns with, you know, with having, well, like, my mother is almost 80 years old. She uses a walker.
Sure.
And if there was something...
Well, my wife does, too, so as you can see. So I understand.
And if that was a concern, but I think that's something you can definitely, you know, we could work around.
Not a problem.
But it sounds like there's just a miscommunication from what I'm hearing and I've read.
We even, you know, we meet the coffee cards and games in the big office, and sometimes we've had a scrunch into the art room, because you need it, and that's fine. Move us around. We know, if you're, you know, renting a room out, go, absolutely. It helps us all out. You know, we have no problem moving. I want to throw this in, although you already know how close-knit we are. We used to go to the park on Fridays. Someone just said, "Let's go to the park and meet on Fridays over Crooker Creek." We played outside... We play outside ping pong, I bring my, my croquet set, we play bocce, did it for a couple hours. When it started getting hot, let's face it, anybody at any age is not going to be able to handle that, you know, twelve o'clock in the afternoon. So we open up our house, and we have about twelve, fifteen people come every Friday, and we play games and coffee and cards. I mean, three times a week we meet. It's, it's hard to get things done around the house.
I appreciate your passion, for sure. Thanks for coming.
That's what retirement's all about, so, thank you.
McIntyre?
Yes.
So just one clarification, if I will. Mahjong on Mondays is not canceled. Open, except for holidays, of course.
Well, all the classes that we decided to take out, the fitness, the yoga, we're giving in staff, we gave staff six weeks to cancel the classes because of the number of the attendance. And again, we do have classes, two to three people attending those. We, it's just two to three people. It's not effective, it's not efficient. And I don't think if two or three people attend the class, you, really, the attendees themselves getting the benefit out of that. This, this is how we look at it. But again, this class was, uh-
It was just thrown in with them, I get it.
It was added without the approval of the Director of Park and Recs and without the approval of the Town Manager and without communicating that addition to anybody in this building. So, uh, we shouldn't be punishing the attendees and the people that would like to come in, especially senior citizens, to be a part of this building.
Right.
But, uh, we wanted to make sure that this program is successful to the same program, the coffee and games. But we don't know that, we don't have any history about the class. So if an employee goes out there on his own and added these classes, it, it, it just is not-
You're more than welcome to pop in on Mondays like a pop quiz and see how we're doing.
So, so, just to level set for a second. Mahjong was inadvertently canceled. It is something that we will look at to reinstate, possibly. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Because the thing is, I know that the residents came here tonight, and they're kind of looking for some sort of resolution to see sort of where council is going.
Right.
And I don't want to belabor this anymore. From what I'm understanding, Wednesday night cla- Wednesday morning coffee talk, coffee cards and games is still on, no issues there.
Absolutely, we-
Great, so that's great. The one that we need to look at is mahjong, right?
Right.
So what I would probably suggest, and not just me, let us amongst ourselves kind of discuss this and respond to the residents by tomorrow. I think we can probably come up with some sort of response to them, let them know exactly where we're at.
Next Monday's Labor Day, so we can't play anyway.
The town has spent at least three hundred dollars, or thereabout, on sets. Each game set costs a hundred dollars. And just two weeks ago, four tables, card table for bo- for mahjong, because you have to play four people, you can't play in the big tables. So there's been money invested by the town for this mahjong, which is, consists of all seniors. Um, so, you know, we've grown from four, like Anthony says, to six, to twelve. Now we're at sixteen and still growing.
So what we're gonna do, and I'm speaking for myself, but I think the other council members would probably feel the same way, we're gonna talk amongst ourselves, and then we'll get a response to you. That's, that's really it.
That's fair.
Now, I'm, I'm in favor of mahjong as well.
My name, my name is Richard Martin. I just want to say that Wednesday cartoon is growing every, every week. We get three new members almost every week. So sooner or later, we have to be, get out of that little, that section of the town center and move to another building probably, because we're gonna go from forty to fifty to sixty, and we won't be able to fit there.
Yeah.
Because every, every week, we get two or three new members.
That's a good problem to have, though, right?
A good problem to have. And in mahjong, we went from, like, say, in the last three weeks, from four to, like, eighteen, and we got people waiting to play. So it's, it's growing every week. Thank you.
One, one last thing, Mayor. I don't know that we can talk about how or when we can talk about it, but I think everybody up here, and as long as the town can do it, uh, is just to say it's reinstated for, for-
Wait, David?
Can we do that?
David?
I mean, is it available?
David, David, David. Let's do it right, suspend the rules.
Okay, suspend the rules and, and-
I need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved. I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen's made a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor? Need a motion to add Monday morning mahjong?
Let's instruct the staff to work, to get the schedule to include Monday morning mahjong for the seniors.
What Karen said.
Well, we'll let, we'll let Susan know.
Okay. I need that motion, what Karen said.
So-
Can we repeat that, please?
McIntyre's made the motion.
Instruct staff to place mahjong for seniors on the schedule for Monday mornings.
With, with, with the appropriate, um, waivers.
Making sure legal agrees.
With the appropriate waivers, right?
Okay. Um, is council, I need a motion to, um, reinstate Monday morning mahjong with the appropriate waivers?
Uh, I want to make a motion to reinstate Monday mahjong with the appropriate waivers. Staff will, town staff will add that, will, will work on adding that to the schedule.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? That would be unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Motion approved. If there's no further discussion, that'll move us to the, uh, law enforcement update. Captain Koval. Oh, there you are. Careful, that's a hard group to follow.
I'm gonna be really brief, but at this year's budget session, I'd like for you guys to come back and help me out a little bit. Because all I need to do is give y'all a list of things I want. So I'm gonna be really brief tonight, because I know that we've got a short agenda and we'd all like to get out of here before dark, but I don't know if he's in the eyesight or not. But I wanted to introduce Tyler Leonard, um, came to us recently. Tyler had actually moved to Indian Trail from Canyon City, Colorado. And he got recruited by one of our deputy's daughter at a bank. She was, uh, helping him set up some bank accounts for him and his wife, and mentioned, what did you do when you were in Colorado? Oh, I was a police officer, and, you know, right before I moved here. Were you thinking about getting back into it? Well, yeah, I am. Well, hey, I know where you need to go to work, and the next thing you know, the ball got rolling. So we actually had to send, uh, me and Malcolm do a recruitment gift card to any of our people if you get a good hire. So we actually had to send a gift card to Chad Barbie's daughter. But Tyler, Tyler's coming to us, bringing good experience, and, and a couple more weeks, and he'll be kicked out on his own. And school started back this week, a little patience, a little courtesy whenever you're outriding. Just ask everybody that's listening to the, uh, to the meeting tonight, you know, watch out for the school buses, watch out for the kids. We've still got good weather right now, early fall. So I'm hoping to see a lot of kids walking back and forth and walking back and forth with their parents, but just keep an eyeball out for them. Same goes for traffic around our construction areas. We're living in a big orange cone in Indian Trail right now, but that's a good thing. Um, you know, I liken it to a surgery, is what I tell everybody. We're in, we're in the midst of a surgery right now, so there's gonna be a little pain and a little bit of swelling, but the end result's gonna be good, I hope. And, and some of the projects going on right now, we're, we're dodging. And I think they've got a serpentine at times with the, with the orange cones and the barrels out on seventy-four. But, uh, knock on wood, it's, it's getting done, and they're moving along. So not only that one, but the bypass project and a couple other things. So there, again, just patience and courtesy from the drivers. And finally, um, I think I'm gonna probably, um, regret saying this, but the next council meeting that we have in two weeks, I think we're gonna have an open house at our new office on Blythe Drive. So I'd like to, you know, work it out with Patrick. Maybe everybody can come over a little bit early prior to, and, and we'll have, we'll have a little bit of food to nibble on before the meeting, and just do a walkthrough. And I'll pair you up with either myself or, or Lieutenant Murray or somebody, and run you through there and give you a, give you a tour of the facility as we've changed it now. And, uh, I think we're gonna be ready for you by next Tuesday. We're working, we're diligently working in between calls, but we've got some furniture delivery tomorrow. Had an electrician in the day putting LED lights up in, in other offices that we didn't get to back at the beginning. All carpet and flooring's done. Appliances are going in the kitchen, and Lowe's is having a, an appliance sale in case anybody's shopping too. So they're doing a Labor Day sale right now, but, uh, we're, we're getting there. So, um, I hope you guys will be impressed with what we've done with your building. Hope you'll see the value that we feel like we've put into the, to the building over there, and, and hopefully that, uh, some of the things that we've done to enhance the safety surrounding the building for the Parks and Rec area over in the, uh, in the park. We've got some cameras over around the new restroom facility that's going in on the backside. So that should give some peace of mind to some, some mothers and some kids, you know, when they're, when they're in and out of the park area, going to the restrooms. We've got those, those areas monitored. Um, same goes for the new walking trail going from Town Hall over toward, uh, Blythe Drive. We've got that monitored with a, with a good shot of cameras, as well as, um, our facilities and your facilities with Public Works building over there with, uh, security monitoring off of one system out of that building. So thought we've been able to do a lot and accomplish a lot with our IT people working over there, so. See if anybody got any questions? And the grocery store is open. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. That brings us to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve. Mr. Cohen's made a motion to approve, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. There are no public hearings. That brings us to old business committee meeting liaison update. Who's up? Mr. Morse, I see you on there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna try to keep this brief. In the last month, due to some absences, I attended, um, the CRTPO meeting. That was on August fifteenth, the planning board meeting on the twenty-first, and the ABC board meeting on the twenty-second. Um, what came out of the, the CRTPO meeting was with, there was an update on the I-77 toll road. State Secretary of Transportation provided that update and, you know, gave some options to, to the crowd. And unfortunately, some of the options weren't good. Um, you know, everything, every action has a, a reaction. And if they do, um, change some of the funding for the I-77 toll road, which it could, it could affect other projects in CRTPO. And of course, one of those projects is our Monroe Road. So, and I'm only mentioning that is, you know, there is, you know, and I have made a, a suggestion to possibly withhold the ten million dollars, um, if they don't, if they're going to, excuse me, if they're going to build a super street in lieu of a conditional widening. Um, but we can't be short-sighted either, because, you know, if we do something like that, we could potentially delay Monroe Road, and that money could possibly get sucked up going somewhere else. And, you know, here, here we are, we're two-lane road still. So anyways, it was kind of eye-opening, some of the ramifications of, of certain decisions. So that was the, the, you know, eye-opener to me. Then there was this, um, American Association of State Highway and Transportation Organization, AASHTO officials that came before CRTPO. And what that was all about is, they meet twice a year, every six months, and they're, uh, they work with NC DOT regarding the signage for the roads. So the, the, what they brought before CRTPO for a vote was the final signage for the Monroe Bypass. So what they proposed was, they wanted to rename it from Monroe Express, Expressway, and call it the US-74 Bypass. And then, uh, seventy-four as we know it maintains its traditional name, seventy-four.
Business.
Not business. So there was, uh, um, Richard Helms, County Commissioner, he's on CRTPO. He asked a real good question. He's like, uh, so we would prefer to have it be seventy-four bypass, name that with, with the, the present seventy-four being referred to as Business Seventy-four. Well, um, unfortunately, the sign's already made. So, 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 uh, they, they come before us, and, and they, they come before us and they, you know, want to vote on this. However, the, the decision's already made, and so it's a foregone conclusion. So, um, when the vote was made, Richard, he voted against it, and I did as well. Because my point was, is why are you coming here to have us rubber stamp it if you really don't want our input? Um, you know, I, personally, you know, Monroe Bypass or US-74 Bypass and our present road being named Highway Seventy-four, it, it really doesn't mean a whole hill of beans to me, the, the differences. But it did bother me that they, they came before CRTPO with already a decision rendered and, and, um, they just looked for a rubber stamp, which they didn't get. And, and unfortunately, this really, um, impacted Monroe, you know, more so than Indian Trail. And yet the Monroe representative wasn't there for CRTPO, and that was quite disappointing. Um, moving on to the planning, unless y'all have any questions about the CRTPO meeting. Um, planning board was on eight-twenty-one. They appointed Dennis Gay as the chairman and vice chairman is Samantha Towns for the upcoming year. There was, um, a pretty good discussion, presentation made about the secret shortcut small area plan survey results. And that'll be coming before us here in not too distant future. There's gonna be public comment on that, so hopefully everyone will get the opportunity to provide some input. Um, also with the UDO, they're proposing some, you know, modifying it, and it's pretty extensive. Um, what, some of the things that I, I, I took notes and gleaned from the, the conversation was, one is, uh, community meetings. They want to reduce that from two to one for conditional rezoning requests. Um, myself, I don't know if I'm in favor of that or not, but, uh, one thing that I did like, and, you know, I felt it was a good thing, is they're gonna do public notice now five hundred feet out from every rezoning effort. So it's not gonna be a hundred feet, two hundred feet, you know, it varies. So that, that's, I feel like that's a good thing, there's some consistency. Um, and there's a lot of changes to Division nine-hundred, which assigns Division six-hundred, which is, um, a minimum standard for the downtown. Um, and it was very thoughtful, you know, discussion, so that was a, a good planning board meeting. Um, the ABC board meeting on eight-twenty-two, um, let's see, Potter and, Potter and Company, Company, I believe, is auditing firm, and they're doing an audit starting today. I don't know how long that audit, um, takes. And then there was, um, there was a question raised by one of the board members concerning that the ABC board had an, had an ethics policy. The response left me a little puzzled, as they weren't sure. So I'm curious what that's, what that means. Um, there was a good discussion about their inventory practices and the results of the recent inventory. And, uh, there's a new system that they're putting in place that'll track inventory and a whole lot better. Um, received an, an update from Jim White. He's on the ABC board regarding the conference that he and Mr. Sullivan attended in Greensboro. And there was some discussions, of course, of that three-day conference, um, that were raised. And, and one of them is the privatization of liquor sales. So that has some, some backing right now, and, uh, especially in light of some of the recent news that came out of the ABC Commission. So there, it may have some, some feet, so we need to stay tuned to that. Um, the ABC sales numbers, they were predicting that they would be down due to the super street widening. But, um, but it didn't actually come to fruition. The numbers held the same as twenty-seventeen. And that was, uh, even though twenty-seventeen had five Saturdays, and that makes a big difference in monthly sales, that additional Saturday. Uh, they welcomed Jennifer Rayburg as their new board member and handed out some, some ABC statutory books. And that was pretty much it. So some people were taking vacations.
Mr. Head?
I really have no, um, update. The, uh, as we talked about at the last, uh, council meeting, this is the Reliable Growth Committee, and it's made up of municipalities surrounding Indian Trail. Um, like Jerry was talking about, CRTPO, transportation, it really got started because of that, trying to get, uh, everybody together as a block in Union County to vote is one. Um, and as I, I shared last time, and I won't go into it very long, um, there's a lot of opportunities in, in sharing contracts. Um, if we, you know, if we're doing a paving contract, if we can get the other municipalities, um, to do it at the same time, then our prices go down, uh, you know, economy of scale. So, um, that's kind of some of the, just some of the things that we're doing. The meeting was scheduled for the, uh, for the Wednesday after the, uh, council meeting, and we had already postponed it. Uh, there was a couple of people on vacation. It is now scheduled for next Wednesday. So, uh, at the next meeting, we'll have an update.
Is that all, Mr. Head?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to the dust control ordinance. Mr. Sadek, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Uh, thank you, sir. I'd just like to mention that, uh, the ordinance has been developed and, uh, I think completed, and we're looking for action, for council to vote on it. Anything you'd like to add?
No, just for, it, it, uh, repeat of what we talked about last time. It is a ordinance, um, a new ordinance for the town, which, um, basically outlaws the- which basically outlaws the, the distribution of dust in amounts and in a manner that causes damage to neighbors and property. It can either be a nuisance and handled through our nuisance process. Or we have this new statute, or this new ordinance puts into place oversight by town management, especially in the area of development, destruction, and construction. And any new person, any new developer or contractor will have to come through the town's system, and they will receive information regarding the rules that they'll have to follow with respect to controlling dust in the course of their project. Should they violate those rules, that can be project specific or some general standards, the town will have the authority to issue stop work orders until they have taken care of controlling the dust.
Just to add, that ordinance will be part of the land development manual, as we're doing with the UDO. So all developers will be familiar with it. And we also came up with guidelines. A sheet, a sheet will be given to every developer. It'll be on the website to, to instruct them how to deal with the dust control.
Any questions? There's no further questions or discussion. We'll need a motion to approve the dust control ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion to approve, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to board committee application revisions. Mr. Sadek, is that you?
I'll take this one. We shared with council last time about 13 objectives. And what we're going to do is, we're going to take those objectives. And also, we're looking at the bylaws. Every director is looking at every committee's bylaws right now. We're going to come up with a list that we could add it to the application that we recently modified. And we'll bring the application before council, and the application should be inclusive. It will have everything we need in regard to appointing members for our committees.
Is that all?
That's all.
Okay. Do you need a motion for anything? No? Okay. That brings us to new business, Sheridan Resolution requesting payment of irrevocable letters of credit, SLC 176-SLC-179, SLC-330. Patrick, is that you?
I'll go, I'll go ahead and start and turn it to our attorney. Now Todd, the red and colored there, town streets, correct? And the ones in blue are, are still private. We have not taken ownership of those streets yet. The neighborhood has been really suffering getting the work done by the developer. And it's, it's been approximately about seven to eight years. I'm gonna throw some numbers out there. Got 11 years. So the neighborhood has been putting up and suffering with incomplete work, especially roadway, missing sidewalk, a lot of storm drainage, and part of the berm that exists at the front of the neighborhood. So we came to a point that we can't get the developer to move out there and complete his work. We do have bonds for these different kind of works. And what we did is, we just turned it to Karen to take it from here. And because the developer failed miserably in performing the work, so in order to get the work done and protect the neighborhood and provide the streets that our residents should have, we turned it to Karen. And Karen, how about it, please?
Yes, so engineering has worked diligently to attempt to get the developer to comply with the requirements for road improvements that were part of his subdivision agreement with the town of Indian Trail. He has been unable to complete those. And our town engineer has determined that he, that, that he is, I'm going to get you the right words, that he has failed to do them, to complete these roads in a timely manner. For that reason, we are going to move forward with requesting payment on letters of credit that the developer was required to post with the town at the time his development began. As part of this process, the board, we're asking the town council to pass a resolution requesting payment from the letter of credit holder. This will help us get the process started. From there on, engineering will take, they will take the next steps, which will, it will, it will be slightly lengthy. This is not something that's going to happen tomorrow. But engineering will be, begin the process of obtaining quotes for the cost of the work that needs to be done. We will approach the bank to collect the money, and then the town will engage a contractor, will likely engage a contractor to go ahead and perform those repairs. I'm sorry that I'm not able to give you a specific schedule on that. But just, this is the outline, and again, this is step one, to get the ball rolling so that the town can actually take over these developer responsibilities, utilizing developer funds and not coming out of the town's own pocket.
Patrick, who's, who's the developer?
I'm sorry?
Who is the developer? What is that?
HC Grimmer Development LLC.
They don't happen to have anything else they're wishing to develop in this town, do they?
No, I, I don't think so.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're not, you know, they're incapable of completing the work. So I don't think they're capable of doing any other work within the city. And if they do, we will keep a very close eye on it. And if they propose any nuance, probably we will not approve it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Morse?
Just the last item is we're meeting with Ms. Higgins, and representative of the neighborhood on Thursday. And we want to give Kathy and the HOE presidents an idea about the amount of money we have, an idea about the improvements, and, and kind of share with the, with the neighborhood exactly our plan. And hopefully we get more information, Kathy. But I think one hour, meeting for one hour, we'll, we'll try to give you everything we have.
Mr. Morse?
Yes, how much is the bond amount?
There's, actually, we're asking for three bonds. It's not a bond, it's a letter of credit. And there's three bonds, and the, the maximum amount of one of them is $235,000 and some change. The second one is $140,600, and the third one is $70,000. So a total of about, oh, I don't know, $400,000-ish?
$445,000.
So will, in best estimate, will, will this cover the cost of the work that needs to be completed?
We have, we have, as part of our analysis, we do believe that that will likely cover the majority of the work that needs to be done, yes.
And if it doesn't, can you sue the developer?
No.
Can the town sue the developer?
No. We, he is, he is insured for that amount of money, and that's the max amount. We can ask him to cover, and we could go after it, but it would, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. I would not like to discuss that at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we pass that resolution tonight?
Yes, if we could, that'd be great.
I'll need a motion to pass the resolution.
So moved.
Mr. Morse made the motion, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously.
Yep, that's an easy one.
So that brings us to, Patrick, do you have any updates for us?
Yes. First, I would like to ask council if they have any questions about the report that I provided. If you have any items in mind, but I do have a few, few items just, were not included in the report. The first one is, our attorneys completed the sale of, the purchase of our five properties for Phase One at First Avenue. So we will get somebody immediately to start designing and get that palm done so we could prevent any future flooding. It will help a little bit. Veterans Memorial, unfortunately, the company that made the brick that matches the building, which is, is it Henley? Hanson Brick, they're, they're out of business, but we were able to match the brick with another company. So the other item about the schedule is that we can't get a bricklayer to come in here and put the brick. I mean, everybody's busy, so we're going to try hard. Adam already contacted seven of them, and I think we're not having an issue with the budget. We're having an issue with the schedule, getting somebody in here. So there is a possibility that it might be after Veterans Day. We wanted to do it before Veterans Day, but if, if that's the case, then we don't have any choice. I know Mr. Morse requested kind of a schedule, whether it's before or after Veterans Day. We do have, I'm pretty sure you're familiar with Radiator, and how they pulled out of Indian Trail, and we lost the labor force of 66 employees. But the business part of the company is still on site. But we did have a company out of Charlotte that interested in coming in and buy the rest of the buildings. We're talking about an initial capital investment of about $7 million, not including operations. So Rocks, Rocks and myself and Gary were working very closely with them. And hopefully we could strike a deal to bring them in town. Lidl, we, we've, we've received a lot of calls about the traffic around Lidl. And Chase and I, we're on top of it, and council member Morse got involved too. We went out there and watched the traffic. We just got to give it a little bit of time for a couple of weeks. And then if there is a need for us to go out there and do a study, we will do it. And then we will communicate with North Carolina DOT. I tried to get ahold of Sean, which is over the phasing and the signalization. I haven't gotten a chance to get with him yet, but there is a possibility that he could change the phasing a little bit to give the side of the street some green. So that way we won't have that much congestion. But just to let council know, we're keeping an eye on, on that. And hopefully we will not have any accidents out there during that duration while we're working on it. On the security park, park here in Indian Trail, we did, we did add two security cameras to the, to the ones that we have right now. Right now, we do not have any blind spot in the building. So we could monitor anybody using the elevator, the downstairs room, the restroom, all that stuff. And Adam is still working on adding the glass for both receptionists and an additional door with the push button. So that probably should happen within the next eight weeks, Adam. Is that a fair? On the, on the trail, we had good news from North Carolina DOT. This is the trail, the $5.1 million, the multi-use trail for Crooked Creek and Independence Boulevard. I think they're going to entertain the idea of allowing us to treat them as two separate contracts. So we could go ahead and start them simultaneously, especially after the super street going to be completed soon. So we have some flexibility there. We just need to sign an agreement with them. And we will bring it before Karen, just to make sure what we're signing on is, is okay. It won't come back and bite us later on. Another good news is, we communicated with North Carolina DOT. Scott Cole is back in town. And he responded that there will not be any cost for the five foot sidewalk on Monroe Road, the entire length. So we, first, they, they said they were going to charge for that, but he assured us that there will not be any charge for that five foot sidewalk on the east side of Monroe Road. On the economic development side, we are moving, Gary is doing a wonderful job. And we are, we've been meeting with high profile developers from Charlotte. And they're very interested in a lot of properties here in town, especially around, around the bypass where we have the 1,100 acres out there. So we're getting a lot of interest from the Charlotte metropolitan area with a lot of developers coming in here, interested in Indian Trail. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Any questions?
Brings us to council comments.
Mr. Head?
I think this is the third time in a row, I'm first.
I shuffled, too.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. We, we definitely appreciate the interest showed here. And I think you see that when we make a mistake, we change it. So I'm glad it came out the way it did. This is a quick one. Really not going to take a whole lot of time. I want to thank everybody for coming. Appreciate everyone's comments. Thank council. Thank staff. I'm, I'm a little slow today because I've, I took the last, I was on vacation. I was one of the ones on vacation. Actually went to Ireland and played golf, so. Played seven rounds in eight days, and that, as a senior, that's not easy to do. Walked 50 miles, so with that, if I have a good evening.
50 miles?
Well, the golf was five and a half.
Well, just don't tell, don't tell your wife what all you been doing for all that time. She, she, she gonna put you to work when you get home, and you're gonna be in big trouble. Oh, she had. Just real quick, last night, I don't know why this hit me. I was, I was thinking of council, I was thinking of town. I do a lot anyway. But I've been here for a long time, up here, like I said, seven years. And I haven't said anything in council comments the last couple of times. So I'm gonna speak for about three, four minutes tonight. But I thought about this time last year, and some of us can, can go back and, and think about that. And we, we were in pretty much well turmoil in our town last year at this time. It was, it looked rough. It really did. And it was a battle to, to, to come here and to fight what was going on. And, and, you know, no offense to anybody, I'm not singling anybody out, but it was tough times for the town. And my son has a, especially when we go to ballgames, and he likes to scream, especially when, when, you know, we're not doing well. And the next year we do well, he screams worst to first, baby, worst to first. And we may not have been the worst last year, but buddy, we have come a long way in a year. And I'm so proud of, of the town and the council members and the mayor and the staff for what they've done. This time last year, we were coming up on an election where it was a good chance that we were, that if this council wasn't elected, we'd get a new town manager. Or we're looking at getting a new town manager, which I would have, I thought was a huge mistake. And I think most of the people up here thought it was also. And I, I wanted to commend him. I don't, nobody's perfect, but I think you've done a good job this year. Karen, I think you've done a good job in watching us and making sure we all do the right thing this year. And, and, you know, I go through each and individual person that works here. We've got, I got the utmost respect. Jim, you're the best there is at what you do. And I, I hear good reports on you all the time about what, about how you try to make this town a better town. And Gary, you're, you're the best that we've ever had at the position, and you're a new hire that we've ever had at this position, and you're doing wonders with, with what, what you've done. And Adam, you know, you've been here the longest, and, and, you know, phenomenal. You're just, just doing a great job. Mike, going down the line, I don't think we've ever had a information director or what, what your title is for whatever it is. You're doing a wonderful job, and I'm very thankful for, for you. Jason, you know how I feel about the parks and what you do with the parks. A number one, D and M. Very proud to be associated with somebody that does that. Todd, you know, phenomenal, phenomenal job. And I know you're, in, in, in many cases, Patrick's right hand man, so, which may change here pretty soon. But we have a new guy. But Rocks, I don't think there's anybody that could do a better job than what you do in the planning department. I think your knowledge is unbelievable. But anyway, and, and council, I'm, I'm just proud of the way this town has turned around. And I'd grade it about 99%. Things are going so well for our town, so well. And we listen. I will tell you what, this council will listen. And it'll do what's best for the people of this town. And that's, that's, that's tough to do, because a lot of times you get up here, you have people that are more interested in what they have, they want to do for themselves. And I don't believe there's a council person up here that's not looking out for the residents. So with that being said, I'm tremendously proud of all of you, everybody in this room. And I'm just thankful, and Brian, welcome. You, you're, you're working with a A number one super staff. And, and I, I think excluding myself, I will, that you're working with a council that's, that's second to none. So I guess I bragged on us all enough, but that means... So, I guess I bragged on us all enough, but that means we've gotta, we gotta work hard to keep that same caliber of work to keep going and keep it number one. But I appreciate all of you, so that's all I gotta say.
And thank y'all for coming, by the way.
This is not, I swear this is not on purpose, but Ms. Howe, you're not...
And Kathy, I left you out, I'm sorry, 'cause you were sitting over there. Kathy, you've done a marvelous job, too. Chase, I love you, man. You're the best, the best.
Well, seniors, you did it. Real pride, it makes a difference. Everybody, every vote counts when it's voting time. And maybe you can see now, if you stick together, you're gonna get things done. And so, just because you're retired doesn't mean you can just sit there. You can get involved in the town, you can sign up for the committees, and really be a working part. And I'm just, and Kathy, I don't know what to say about you, 'cause we're just hoping she comes back and gets real active again. And I understand about the grand baby, we, you know, they all understand that, but she's exceptional. And when you're in a fight with her, boy, you better, you'll hang in there, because she'll make you hang in. But thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for, all of you for coming. And I could repeat what David said, that that would take the shine away, so I don't want us to do that. Anyway, David's been here a long time, and he's excellent, too. He'll get up and fight for whatever's right, and that's important. And if you have problems, just call one of us, and we'll try to get things worked out. Because if you don't try, you'll never get a yes. And tonight proved that you got your yes. Thank you for coming.
Mr. Morse?
Well, first off, welcome back, Councilman McIntyre and Councilman Head. Hope your time off was good. And it really is a team effort. You know, it was, it wasn't nothing for me to fill in at the planning board, or fill in at the ABC board when things come up with these council members. And we're trying to, we are trying to do the very best for the town, and that's through effort. That's one of the big things. You know, we've got a very good staff and a good town manager that is very responsive to the requests of the residents and, of course, council as well. There's been a lot of issues that have come up in the last couple of weeks regarding, traffic is the biggest one, and from different quarters in the town. It's not just the Lidl problem, but there's neighborhoods that also have some issues going on. And it was really, it was kinda nice, I was behind on emails for about three days, and when I finally responded, the constituents said, hey, no worries, man, they've already on top of it, and we've already got a plan, and that's very reassuring. That was a great small business seminar that was put on here at the town hall. I saw Gary and Patrick in the newspaper, and I heard good things about that. Glad the American Legion came out tonight. I went to their meeting last month and just introduced myself as a veteran, and wanted to learn more about what they did in our community. And I found out quite a bit that they do reach out, and they try to help other veterans primarily, and especially ones that are down on their luck and need a helping hand. And we can, you know, as people, we can learn a lot from those guys as far as reaching out to our fellow man and trying to help them up and help them out. So, I plan on going back. I think I'm gonna actually join that organization. As I said, I'm a veteran, and I was glad that they took the time to meet with me. Yeah, we're working good together. I feel like that maybe when we get into this UDO, we're gonna have differences of opinions. I know that we talk one-on-one about some of these issues that are gonna come up, but the nicest thing, or the wonderful thing about it is, man, we can have differences of opinion and still respect each other in the process of our dialogue. And, you know, and of course, not one, not any single one of us is gonna get our way or be right every time. And it's, but it's great to know that I'm working with a good team of fellow council persons. Thank y'all all for coming out tonight and speaking your mind and being passionate about what concerns you, because, you know, that's, you can read things in the emails and second guess, but, you know, hearing it directly from you, that's awesome. And staff, you do a wonderful job, and everybody have a good night. And please, slow down out there with the school, you know, back in session. I know we're all in a hurry to get from one place to another, but, you know, just be careful. Thanks, have a good night.
Marcus McIntyre, Mr. McIntyre.
Mr. Mayor, I guess you're next, then. I'm gonna make mine, I'm gonna make mine brief. First of all, staff, thank you for all that you do. We do appreciate it. Patrick, good job. Brian, welcome on board. And residents, I appreciate that you guys had, there was something that was concerning to you. You came up, you spoke, and we will listen, whether it's email or in person, we will listen. And we are always interested in doing what's best for the town and its residents, whether you are ninety, a hundred, or you're two, or one. We have a good mix of the population here, and we're here as servants of the people in the town, and we will always do what is in the best interest of the town for its residents. That's the way that we all think. We also like talking to each other and working with each other, trying to find a common goal. So, I do appreciate you guys coming, and that way, we were able to find a resolution to that. One of the first things I'm gonna do when I get home, though, is I'm gonna Google what Mahjong is. Because I've been...
You wanna spell it?
Huh?
You wanna spell it?
M-A-J-H-O-N? No.
J-O-N-G.
J-O-N-G.
G, M-A-H, J-O-N-G.
Okay.
Oh, it's two Gs.
But it's not the thing, I mean, you play like the tiles, it's, that's just like...
I just wanna understand what the game is now. I mean, I might, I might have to try and, if I wasn't at work on a Monday, I'd probably have to come in and try it out, because I'm interested now.
Why don't you do a nighttime version?
All right. But thank you to all of you for coming out. Counsel, I appreciate all you guys there, especially you filling in for some of us, especially when I was on vacation. By the way, I really enjoyed my vacation, so it's good to be back. Everybody have a safe drive home, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mayor.
Who's next? Welcome back, Marcus, Mike, glad you had a safe trip. This council truly knows what it is to be representatives of the people. And for that, as a resident, I'm honored to not only have them represent me, but even more so humbled and honored to work alongside them. And I have seen them have disagreements, and the eyeballs pop out of the eyes, but never once have they been disrespectful to the office they hold or to each other's. And thank you. Mr. Cohen really said it all. Kathy, thank you. You, without you, I wreak a lot of mistakes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate you, as the rest of the staff. And seniors, thanks for coming out. And we realize that, and what the council realizes, that someone retires every 6.4 seconds from the last statistics I heard. And the community of seniors is growing at a rapid rate and might possibly, I don't know how this might work, and if it's even possible, to have a senior citizen committee, since we're gonna have senior citizen groups here doing things at town hall to find out what works, what doesn't work, what the town council can do to help our senior citizens in regards to also getting information that the county has. I don't know how many of you are aware of the up to 50% off your property taxes that you're entitled to with the county, that if you fill out the paperwork, this time of the year, it begins in January. You can email me, I'll get you the information if you don't. It's income-based, but you at least get a little bit off. Hey, it's better in your pocket, even if it's a dollar. So, there's many things we could do to help out the seniors and get them information. Dave, Jerry, you mentioned that signs were already printed. Does that mean those wonderful hemdy bridge signs stay up there? That they're not gonna redo them?
No, they're redoing those.
And we, you know, as always, be careful with the children out there, but also, well, let's not forget our crossing guards. Listen to them. They have less than a split second to move, and they've got thousands of cars zipping by them in sometimes six different directions. So, you know, take care of our crossing guards, too. And one last thing, I'm working with another person to put together a dinner fundraiser for a little boy named Luke who was hit by a drunk driver while crossing the street, which will be September 21st at United Indian Trail Methodist Church. And if you check social media or email me, I can get you information if you're willing on donating time, coming out and enjoying a dinner, and just helping this family in town who's in great need. By the grace of God, Luke survived and is healing, but has a very long road ahead of him. That being said, good night, everybody, God bless. We have a closed session?
We do.
Patrick? I already said we didn't, now you're making me out to be a fibber. I have no paper.
Do we have a closed session?
I have no paper in front of me.
Well, I just told my wife to come pick me up.
We have a closed session for undetermined causes.
He said we didn't have a closed session. Who's gonna handle her?
So, you want me to read that for you?
Please, the two that are checked.
Which one? The two?
No, no, don't put it off of me.
Which one?
The two that are checked, yes.
Yeah. NCGS, NCGS 143-318-11A5. To establish or instruct the staff or agent concerning nego... What is that? We don't...
No, no, just the statute, go ahead, the second one.
Which one, this one?
There's two, yeah. It stands competence, yeah, you have to read it.
Wait a minute, isn't that saying by accordance to...
Yes.
We're entering the closed session under NCGS 143-318-11, and NCGS 143-318-11A5.
I need a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Ms. Howe's made the motion, all in favor? unanimous.